I call the committee, I didn't, it's going to be a long night.
It's all good.
Good evening. It's seven o'clock. We have quorum, so I call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Welcome to the folks in the gallery and to those folks watching at home. Just a reminder, this is being broadcast live, but it's also available for future viewing on our YouTube channel. I'll begin by acknowledging that we are gathered here today in Unimagi, the land of the fog, a part of Migmagi, the unceded traditional territory of the Migma people since time immemorial. We honor and thank the Migma for sharing their land and home with us. Next item on the agenda, you have an agenda in front of you that was circulated last week. Are there any additions to the agenda as circulated?
Counselor Marshon?
Could I add just a little discussion on contact information?
I'm sorry?
On contact information?
Contact information.
On how we get contacted? Our contact information, yes.
So we need unanimous consent for additions to the agenda. Do we have, what say you? Any problem with adding that to our agenda? Okay, great. So we'll add contact information to the agenda. Do we need to number 12? Yep. Contact. Okay. Hearing no other additions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated with the one addition.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Marshon. Can I have a second or?
Mumberkett.
Mumberkett, sorry. Have a second or?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Marshon to accept the, to approve the agenda as circulated with the one addition on contact information. So can I ask, all those in favor of adopting the agenda circulated, signify by saying yes. Those opposed, the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the review of the minutes from the last committee of the whole meeting, which was held on September 9th, 2024. Any errors or omissions to the minutes as circulated? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as circulated.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Deputy Warden Sampson. Can I have a second or?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Counselor Sampson to approve the minutes of the September 9th, 2024 committee of the whole meeting as circulated. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Those opposed, the motion is carried. So we now have two presentations. So we are beginning with Claire Rankin, who will provide us with the Returning Officer's election report. So over to you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I would hazard a guess by this time that most people in this room had their fill of elections, but as a democracy, there'll always be another one coming over the horizon, and that's where we find ourselves today with the provincial election. However, the 2024 municipal election in Richmond County occurred on October 19th, and the five people in the council chairs are to be congratulated for achieving the status of county councillor. As a past councillor of 10 years, I know that there are many evenings of work ahead for you all, but also many hours of learning, listening, and action. I think back to my time sitting around this table and at the long, narrow one at the cold, old courthouse, where, yeah, the warden and the clerk sat up and the day is much higher than the rest of us. It was an elevated position there. But I know that it was, the time was very valuable in my understanding of not only how a government works, but how to assess and address the needs of the current population and to plan for the future prosperity of our great county and residents. So to the election. This is my third municipal election as the Returning Officer for the municipality, and I have to say it presented the fewest difficulties. In 2016, the number of councillors went from 10 to five. It meant moving whole communities from one district to another and combining areas that had traditionally been separate seats. For example, I'm a dam had four councillors that time, Pettigrew, Ayrshat, West Ayrshat, and Discoos, who were mainstays of the municipal scene for years until the Utilities and Review Board, the URB, told the county to downsize to five after a lot of discussion and nauseam. In 2020, the election was held during a worldwide pandemic due to COVID-19. It meant we had to ensure that all polling stations had a separate entrance and exit. Voters were manned at the door by constable, who made sure that they were in the correct polling station, that they were wearing masks, and that their hands were sanitized. And then everybody got to vote using their own, very own golf-sized pencil, one use only. So I say this was the least stressful because there were only six candidates in three districts with two acclamations. Four years ago, there were 13 candidates vying for all five. And as I had previous lists of poll workers and community halls, this part of the election process was also smoother. And there wasn't an incident on Election Day that was a learning test for all involved. The one trait that ran through this election cycle in here and most of the surrounding areas was voter apathy. The voters seemed to be in acceptable mood of who was governing them. In God's Well, for example, seven out of the eight council seats were filled by acclamation. And the only one that wasn't was the warden who lost his seat after many years. In St. Mary's, it was the same as here with two acclamations out of five seats. Inverness had half their six seats filled with no election, and of course, the kicker was Mulgrave, where the mayor and four councillors were all returned by acclamation. In turnout too, the number of voters cast was down considerably. In Richmond, I just lost the page. I was, in Richmond, excuse me. In Richmond, there were turnouts of 67% in District 1, 57% in District 2, and 54% in District 4, for an overall rate of 59% of voter participation. Again, the trend of voter apathy could be partly the blame. In Inverness County, for three contests, their results were even lower with a percentage of 56% turnout. Lunenburg was at 45% turnout, and Kings County set a low mark in the province with only 31% people casting their ballots. On the positive side, the number of eligible voters that was up from this election from 7,910 in 2020 to 7,080 this year. So, so much for a declining population in Richmond County. We also added approximately another 100 voters on Election Day during the revision period, and there were 37 proxy votes this year, and I feel it's 77 inquiries from the municipalities, election 2024 page, from people checking to see if they're on the voters' list. And these were people from Forshu, Dundee, who then I had to tell them that they had nowhere to cast their vote, even though they were on the voters' list, or that put them on the voters' list. They had to sit out for another couple of years. And I have to apologize to those people who signed up on Election Day because there was a checkmark there, and they, by checking that, and most of them did, it was told that they would then be on the provincial and the federal voting's list. But because of the turnaround with the provincial election, they are not on the provincial list, so they will have to be sworn in again if they go to the polls on November 26th. I would like to thank the previous council for applying to the URB and moving some district boundary lines, which were much needed, in my view. The residents of Lennox Passage are now represented by the council from District 3. The people living in Tiberville no longer must drive to Grand Anne's to vote, as they are now part of District 4. And finally, there was an end to the eight-year mistake that had half of Grand Grab Road in one district and the other half in another. And I'd also like to previous, thank the previous council for raising the pay work rates for the 44 Election Day workers who worked diligently and devotedly on October 19th. I would like to go on record here tonight and thank them all for their efforts in assisting this year's election, many of whom are now hired to work in the provincial election on November 26th. And as you know, as you know quite well by now, as I know, there is no way to run a municipal election in Richmond County without the support and help of the staff here in this office. So thank you to Troy, to Clint, Christine, Christina, and the rest of the staff who assisted me, and a shout out to the guy in the little room over there, Clayton, for his ever-present technical help, and to Shelley for checking and double-checking that I was going okay. She is no longer an election rookie. Sincerely, that is my report. And I'll take any questions if anybody had any.
Thank you very much. I'll turn the floor over to councillors if anyone has any questions.
Please do.
There we go. So thank you, Claire, for your presentation. I did want to just note, I think you said the voter, eligible voters went from 7910 in 2020 to 7,080 this year, but it was 7,980, right? Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure that I had that right because I did notice quite an increase in my area in terms of mailouts. So it was really great. The voter turnout, again, like you said, I think there can only be one active at a time yet. So I'll get you to press it once I'm done. Voter turnout, you know, in the context especially of having that election and then coming into Remembrance Day, really difficult to swallow. And I would hope that people heed your words and note the low percentage, especially in District 4, and, you know, and consider voting in the future because, you know, you need to have your say. People fought for that right and died for that right. Question for you. On the provincial voter list, it was a bit of a, it was a bit of a shemozzle. I don't know how else to describe it. People who had been on the voter list for decades fell off of it somehow. It was just like your opinion on how can we improve the accuracy of that voter list? I know we receive it from the provincial government, but what can we do? And just get you to press your button.
Okay. Well, I really don't know what could be done. I mean, the list was very convoluted, as you say. They gave me one list in July, and then three weeks later sent another list out, and we had to weld all them both together. The lists are very complex in that they have the Latin long of everybody's voter's address on the list. So the list is approximately that long if I laid it out end to end. However, why they missed so many people is unknown to me. They had people on there who had moved here not two, three weeks before the list came out, and yet there were people who lived here all their lives who were not on the list. And so it was a shame that, that, you know, because people were upset, and some of them turned around at the voting station when they found out that they weren't on the list. Yeah, after being on it for so many years. So, I mean, maybe it's a note to send to elections in Nova Scotia. The other alternative was what we did in 2016 was we enumerated ourselves, and we had door knockers going, we had our own people going door to door to do enumeration of the whole county. So those are probably the only two options. But why, why there was a mix-up, or why there so many people were missed, I have no explanation. No.
Anyone else? I would, I have a question about some suggestions you might have, and open it up to anyone here. The, we're so concerned about voter apathy and also, you know, lack of people running. So anytime, we can make sure that that goes as well as, you know, we don't put any hurdles up. I wonder if you could speak to the fact that quite often what happens is, not each time. I think it's August 26th is the date that they say you can now become a candidate in the municipal election. But in order to do that, you need the form signed saying your taxes are not, are paid. But we can't get that from the municipality until September 1st. Now, it may be that that's, there's nothing we can do about that, but I'm just wondering if there are some options around being, getting ahead of that in the next election cycle and making sure that our socials really explain that although you're going to see lots about being able to, you know, go in and get your, because there are people who, you know, take time off work to come into the municipal office to get that form signed, and then they, you know, they, I was one, I came before September 1st, and then I wasn't able to get, which is, I'm retired, it's easy. But I think anything we can do to streamline the process. I'm just wondering what your, what thoughts on that might be.
Well, I think the act says that, as you, the day you're nominated, you had to, you have to have that certificate. So if you come in on the August 27th, then you paid your taxes that day. To me, I would accept it if you were able to get the letter saying that you were paid on that day. It really is a, there's a confusing thing about September 1st and the taxes for the next round of municipal taxes are due on that day. So that kind of is overriding the message that you can come in on the 26th. So I think it's an internal discussion that you have to have both your finance department and your lawyer, because I think that that could be sorted out along before the next election and see what the understanding is. Because if one, one form says you can come in on the 26th, but that you're not allowed to get the form from the county, or you can't get the form until September 1st, it's just, it's a misunderstanding somewhere, I believe. And I think the lawyer would, because I did ask the-
Provincial Returning Officer.
Sorry.
I'm-
No, it's still on. Sorry. And that's what she said. It's like it's in the act. You can get it on the 26th, but it's, it's, it's an in-house thing, I think. It's, and it has to do with the timing of the tax bill going out. Yeah. I don't know if it's, because it goes out September 1st, but it's not due till November. See, there's a gray area that you may be able to fix. Yeah. And the other thing is, we were only one of three municipalities in the province to go paper only. The others were Clark's Harbor and Lockport. So next election, it seems that electronic vote would be the most advantageous to, especially to get to the younger voters who they can pick up their phone, get their PIN, and vote right there and then, and not have to, you know, make a trip to the polling station. So that would be another way to get more people out, I think.
And I think the confusion around the rules for provincial voting and the rules for municipal voting is a challenge as well. But I appreciate that. And I, we've got four years, but I think anything we can do to kind of close up some of those issues. Any other comments, concerns? Counselor Marshon?
Yeah, the, the taxes are only due November the 1st. So why couldn't we get a letter on August 26th? The tax bill that comes out September the 1st, and I believe staff here puts it out sooner than they normally do, they're not due by the 10th of September. So our taxes would be paid as long as your April bill is paid. So where's the error in having to pay the taxes that are due a month or two, even after the election?
I don't issue the paper. So it's, it's not me that has any qualms about that. It's like, when you come in, I can't force the municipality to give you a paper. You know, you come in and apply for it, and, and they have their own internal reasons why you can't get it before August, that's September 1st.
Counselor Marshon?
I guess that's a stop question, then.
And like I said to the word, we'll take this one away, and we'll run it through the wringer and see what we come up with. Appreciate the feedback.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, just to point out, not that, as of right now, with the provincial election for Richmond County, there are eight people working in the Returning Officer's office to look after the election in Richmond. And it was just me for this one. So hopefully it'll go smoother and nothing will be out of the ordinary because they have a lot of people to check up. Yeah. So I'll be putting my rate up next time because now there's eight over there doing the check. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to just, anytime we can tighten up procedures and clean up some, some things that just don't marry up, it's always advantageous. With no huge catastrophe, certainly nobody was left out of, of, of running, but it just doesn't hurt to kind of address those. Go ahead, Counselor Mumberkett.
So, thanks, Claire. So the nomination papers that were filed, remember you and I were having a conversation when I filed mine, and it does say clearly on the bottom that they're public documents. So you, you can publicize them. And I don't know if I'm asking you the, maybe I'm not asking you the question, maybe I'm putting it out in the universe to staff. We didn't really consider election in our, elections in our communications plan, what can and cannot be publicized. So I'm wondering if, I don't know if we could make a motion to refer that to policy and bylaw, you know, to consider adding in elections-related materials into our comms plan, because really those nomination papers should, should be included in that, right? And, and God knows what else. So I'm, I'm just kind of wondering about, about making that kind of a motion. So Claire, yeah?
Well, it was actually, for the first time, they were available online.
Oh, okay.
They were on the county website, and people, so I didn't know who was coming through the door because-
I mean, once they're filled out.
Once they're filled out. And there is another flaw there in my point, in that when you file your nomination papers, all I get from you is your address. So I was being contacted by all kinds of media, saying, can you send their email and their phone number? I said, I don't have it. I mean, I don't have it as the Returning Officer. I might have it because, you know, I play hockey with, you know, Mike and, well, I mean, no, but that's the only reason I had it. And, and so there was no, that is something that might want to be included on the nomination papers for a reason like that. If the media, the media wanted to know all your contact information, but I had to refer them to Shelley or, you know, no, no, you didn't have them either. So it's, I know there's a proxy issue there, but if the, if the box was there to be able to be ticked off by potential nominations, nominations, nomination papers where the Returning Office would be able to release that information, it would make life a little easier for them.
So do we have a motion?
I would make the motion to refer our communications plan back to bylaw and policy. To include elections information, although not, of course, great urgency on that because we don't have to worry about it for another four years. But to your point, Warden, we could tighten that up in the meantime.
So there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second or?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Counselor Sampson. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none. The motion on the table is to refer the communication plan back to the Bylaw and Policy Committee to add election information. All those in favor, say aye. Yes. Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you very much, Claire. Very grateful for that. So I believe, oh, look at that. Shelley is getting us up and running. We have a second presentation from Barry Braun, who's going to talk to us about the Good Neighbor Policy. Are you able to hear us?
I'm here.
Okay. Well, we'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you so much. There we go. Thank you, Warden Landry, and, and councillors, for giving me this time to talk about how Richmond County can be a place of stronger connections amongst neighbors. According to Stats Canada, 48% of seniors experience loneliness. One in eight so chronically, not seniors, but, sorry, not seniors, but adults, Canadian adults, experience loneliness, and one in eight are so chronically lonely that when they have something major happen in their life, they're totally alone. They have no one that they can share their problems with. So I have a question. I wonder what it would be like if it was actually normal for neighbors to know, care, and support each other in Richmond County. I'm Barry Braun, and I'm the founder of the Happy Community Project, the Good Neighbor Builders Society, and the Good Neighbor App. And all of these have a common vision, which is to make it normal that neighbors know each other, care about each other, and support each other. In my journeys across Canada, I've heard many stories that, about what it's like in our neighborhoods. And for example, one of the common themes that comes up goes something like this. A new neighbor moved in right next door to me about two years ago. And I would give them a friendly wave every once in a while, but I never really got to know them. And then recently, a moving man showed up, and I went over out of curiosity to see why they're moving. And what they told me is their spouse had died six months earlier, and no one in the neighborhood noticed, and so they're leaving. Similarly, I've talked to meals on wheels, and what they tell me is that they make a call ahead of time to make sure somebody's going to be there to receive the meal. But they call, and there's no answer. They call again the second day. There's no answer. They call the third day. There's no answer. So on the fourth day, they knock on the door, no answer. So they call for a wellness check. And the resident had passed away, and nobody in the neighborhood noticed. These are incredibly sad stories, but are an canary in the coalmine, if you like, for what it's like in our neighborhoods these days. So I ask a question. What is it like to be a good neighbor? What is a good neighbor? As you ponder this question, you'll probably come up with thoughts that are something along the lines of this. A good neighbor is someone I can trust, they're approachable, they care about other, our other neighbors, and are supportive when we need help. We've done a lot of exploration of what research says, and including what is belonging. And here's what belong, what research says belonging is. Belonging is when I'm in a community where I can trust the other people there. They're friendly and approachable, they care about me, and are supportive of me. Good neighbors and belonging are the same thing. Why is it important? Well, this is my own personal reason why I- She's now 12. But I want her to be able to grow up in a community where she can enjoy the support of her neighbors if she goes into this crazy world that we're leaving for her. But it's, there's more practical reasons in the, in the now as to why it's important. But it's, there's more practical reasons in the now as to why it's important. And these are not going to be new to you. Social connectedness with neighbors creates better mental health, social health, and physical health. People live longer and they're happier when they're socially connected with the people who live nearby them. But it also affects the community as a whole. Their, research has shown that there's less crime, more volunteerism, and the economy is more robust and resilient when people actually are socially connected inside the community in a stronger way. Communities are happier. I know that many communities have been working on strengthening the social fabric of their communities. And the traditional way of doing that is holding events where people can come and share with each other. But they haven't worked, because that's why we have forty, forty-eight percent of our Canadian adults are experienced loneliness. In fact, they go to these events and often feel even more lonely. So we have to have a different way of tackling this problem. So I put together a team of professionals who are highly skilled, expert in what they do, to come with, together with a way of attacking this problem in a new way, and developing a process where we can deliver it in a scalable way across our country. So, what we do is enable communities to be good neighbor communities, where we see this as a cultural problem, not just a simple problem to put a Band-Aid on and then everything's fixed, but we see it as fundamentally evolved into a cultural problem over the last forty years. And what we're told and experience is that people are actually afraid to meet their neighbors, to reach out to their neighbors. And the reason they're afraid is because we've developed a culture where it's inappropriate to reach out to a neighbor, or if we do, we may receive a welcome, an unwelcome welcome. And so, what's going on here? How come I'm going the wrong way? So, we've created a process where we actually work at shifting the culture of a municipality. And to do that, what we do is partner with the municipality and the NGOs in the municipality. And together, we work together to actually shift the culture. The tool that we use is called the Good Neighbor Method. The Good Neighbor Method is a tool that was developed by Bruce Dianis, who's pictured here, who has a PhD in community psychology, and myself. And it's all founded in science. Bruce has brought together, brought to us a theoretical framework on which to build a different way of approaching this problem. And the framework that we use is, first of all, people have to experience what it means to have a sense of community. What experiences do they have to have so that they can actually feel they belong? They have to be motivated to actually belong in a community, to be part of a community. And so what do we have to do for them so that they can feel motivated? And as I mentioned earlier, people are afraid to reach out to their neighbors. And so, there's a theory called polybagel theory. And basically what that means is that if the first response is fear, which means fight or flight, how do you short-circuit that and instead engage social engagement? And so we've developed, built into our processes, a way that tones down the fear and flight and tightens up the social engagement part that people experience with each other. And then there, you shift the, shift a culture, the municipality or the community has to go through stages. And what are the stages that they have to go through so that there is actually a true change in the culture? Culture drives our behavior. And if you can shift the culture, you'll change the behavior of people. And the good thing about that is, once you've accomplished it, it is sustainable. It's hard to shift culture back again. So the Good Neighbor Method is a process that is a complete system for shifting the culture towards greater belonging. The Good Neighbor Method isn't just theoretical, though. It's based on experience. I myself have fifteen years of experience now in community development. And before that, I had a long career as a coach, one of the first coaches in Canada, and my focus was on organizational, cultural change within organization. Now, how do you build a culture inside a large organization? We've developed the Good Neighbor Method so that it's safe, people can feel comfortable and safe, no matter what their differences might be, and showing up. We make it fun and we make it easy to engage with. One of the things that's also unique about what we do is we've created the Good Neighbor App. The Good, it's one thing to bring people together, but there's another thing to have them actually stay connected and engage with each other. And in our modern world, people no longer knock on people's doors or give them a phone call. So we've invented a technology which is designed specifically to initiate face-to-face conversation. We think of it as a virtual doorbell. Other people think of it as the anti-social media, social app. And the whole idea is getting people talking with each other face-to-face. So here's how it's implemented inside a community like Richmond County. It starts with a kickoff event, and the purpose of the kickoff event is to recruit some early adopters who are, we call neighbor connectors. People who live in neighborhoods who are willing to put in a little bit of extra effort to help their neighborhoods become more socially connected. Once, we train, we train these neighborhood connectors in the Good Neighbor Method and then have them implement the method in their own neighborhoods. And after about six months, we hold a celebratory event in Richmond County that showcases the success that they've had, and to let other people know that it can be, it can apply to them as well. And out of that, we recruit more neighborhoods, neighbor connectors, until we reach a tipping point. And once we reach the tipping point, then it spreads rapidly throughout the rest of the community. So, for example, a normal timeline for this is it takes about six months, four to six months, to get it started with the early adopters, which represents normally four to five percent of the community. Then we have the celebratory event and recruit another ten, twelve percent of the neighbors in the community, which, as they implement it, brings us to a tipping point in the community, at which point it rapidly spreads throughout the rest of the community. And this whole process takes eighteen to twenty-four months. So, once we've reached a tipping point, it is now normal for neighbors to know each other, to care about each other, and to offer support to each other. In all of this process, getting people talking face-to-face with each other is the true key to it all. And this is not only talking to each other, but building relationships of trust with each other. And that's what the Good Neighbor Method does. So, a for example story of Windsor, Nova Scotia. When we started in Windsor, Nova Scotia, they had a story in the community that said, nothing ever happens here. This place is so divisive that if somebody has a good idea, we're going to work hard to kill that idea. We'll fight about the idea until the idea dies. Nothing ever happens here. If you ask people in Windsor, Nova Scotia today, what they'd like to live in Windsor, Nova Scotia, what they'll say is, there's so much going on here. Look at how we do things together. Look at how we support each other. This is a wonderful place to live. The whole point is getting neighbors, connecting with neighbors, face-to-face, and face-to-face Gladys Taber is a famous author, columnist, professor, was at once upon a time. And she made a statement that said, being a good neighbor is an art which makes life richer. I personally disagree with her. I think being a good neighbor is actually critical to the well-being and happiness and the social fabric of our communities. Here are some mayors who have had some experience with us, who have things to say. Abe Zabian, you may know him, he's the current mayor of Windsor West Ham, said that we changed the mindset of the twenty thousand people that lived in West Ham's Windsor. Anna Allen was the mayor of Windsor, Nova Scotia, and she, her statement is that I see a really big difference in our community. And Wendy Robinson, who is the mayor of Stuyat, noticed how easy it is to implement our processes.
Forgive me for interrupting. We're at the fifteen-minute mark, so if, if, great information, if you could just wrap it up in a few minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm done. Together, we can make it normal that neighbors know and care and support each other, and that's what I'm asking us to do here. And this is how you can reach me.
Well, you win the prize for the best timed presentation, then.
There's going to be a pop share, but I'm not going to show them.
There you go. You definitely win the prize for the best timed presentation ever, then, so good on you for that. So thank you very much for that. I'll throw it out to councillors, if there's anyone who has any questions, comments.
So you may be asking where else we're doing this. Let me ask a question for you. The municipality of the District of Bloonenburg is, we're just starting to implement it there. We are expecting the council of Yarmouth to be approving this in a couple of weeks from now, you know, they've waited until after their elections. But I've been, all the indications are to me that, and I have very high confidence that we'll be starting in Yarmouth as well. We also have a project going in Montreal and another project going in Churro, Nova Scotia.
Thank you very much for that. Hearing, no other question? Oh, councillor Mumberkett?
Thank you, Warden. So, hi Barry, nice to see you again. I just had, I just wanted to get a point of clarification, so, on a couple of points. So, we have some welcome networks in place now in our community. I know Lewesdale has a very active group. There's, I believe there's one here on the island, one in St. Peters. So do you see the project kind of connecting with, like, with those groups? I just would worry about some duplication there.
Yes, for sure. So I have some experience with welcome networks, and we're being considered in Churro to actually work directly with the welcome network in Churro as well. One of the things that happens with newcomers, from our experience, and you may, correct me if I'm wrong, and I really appreciate it if you would, you're a constant learning experience, but newcomers, particularly newcomers of difference, who aren't white, for example, they want two things when they move to a new place. They want a job so that they can earn their way, and they want to belong. They want to have a sense of belonging. But often when they reach out to the community to be, just have a sense of belonging, they can feel the pushback on themselves. And so then they tend to huster around people who are like them, who are also of difference like themselves. I don't know if that's your experience, but that's the experience that we commonly find. Our process assumes that these people are living in neighborhoods, and our process is to make it safe so that they can show up, and then work them through the process where they actually get to know the other neighbors that are in the neighborhood in these gatherings that we hold, and through our process, develop a sense of trust with each other, that they trust the existing neighbors and the existing neighbors learn to trust them as well, so that they can have a true sense of belonging. This goes for people of all difference, whether they're newcomers or not, people who are disabled, people who are of the LGBTQ community, whatever their, whatever their existence may be, they live in neighborhoods. There's other people that live around them. And this is our process for how do we, how we integrate them as part of belonging in the community.
Thank you. Did you have an additional question? Sure, carry on.
Thank you, Warden. So just a quick follow-up to that, Barry. Then, the project proposal section of the information you provided showed some cost factors and support that you'd need from the municipality to proceed. I think we have about nine thousand people in Richmond County, so if I use that fifteen-hundred times, you know, five, I think it would be over your, because you said up to four thousand people, it would be a forty-eight thousand dollar cost. So our cost would be closer to fifty-five thousand.
About right.
Yeah. So our cost, so the cost of the project here in Richmond would be fifty-five thousand five hundred. So financing from us, the expectation would be ten percent, five thousand five hundred dollars. But also, I think more importantly or pressingly, you're looking for a pretty significant amount of support from the staff at the council, at the county. So I guess I'm wondering, Warden, if we would want to make a motion to kind of refer this back to staff, to investigate whether or not we would have the capacity to even participate? Because I know we've got few people doing many things, and I think the cost factor is low relative to, I think, the benefits, but it's the capacity of staff that I think is going to be the tipping point for us. I don't...
Yes. I understand that. And we've heard this in other communities as well.
Okay.
So I look forward to talking with the staff so that I can explain exactly what commitments they would have to have, what they would actually be doing with their time commitments and would be, and that sort of thing. And I look forward to that.
And just for...
And then you can have that information.
And just for folks who may be watching, there is quite a bit of information in the package for this meeting that can be found online or in social media that wasn't actually presented in this PowerPoint presentation. So there are some costs there, and how, you know, ninety percent of that is grants and ten percent of it is absorbed by the municipality. So councillor Mumberkett, are you making a motion to refer this to staff to review?
Yes, yes, Warden. I would like to make the motion to refer back to staff to review. I just wouldn't like to see us make any commitments, you know, without having their input. So if, so I will make the motion to refer the proposal to staff for investigation.
Do we have a seconder? I'll second that. Moved by councillor Marshawn and seconded by deputy Warden Sampson to refer the happy, I'm sorry, Good Neighbor Program to staff for review. Councillor Mumberkett. I'll get the names right eventually, yeah. So councillor Mumberkett and deputy Warden Sampson moved. So, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Motion is carried.
It's not easy. You have two Sampsons.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for the opportunity.
Great. So...
Are there any last questions before I go?
I don't think. No, thank you.
Bye, Barry, thanks.
So...
Thank you all for having me here. I'm sorry I couldn't be up there in person, I would have most rather have done that. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Warden's report, or Warden's items, and the first of those is the Warden's report. And just moving forward, that report will be in writing for the calendar month before. So, at the December meeting, I'll have a report for you for the month of November. For the month of October, I was Warden for an hour and a half. So, nothing happened in October. I will say that I did attend, as did councillor Mumberkett, did attend the new council session in, put on by Municipal Affairs and Housing. I just want to say, I think that that is a misnomer. I think that that is not an accurate description of what, of what that is. There is new information that... There is new information that addresses new issues that emerged, so. And today, I'll also put in, but just earlier today, I was at a meeting about, a presentation about 2-1-1, which was really, really exceptional information, so. Councillor Mumberkett, do you have anything to add from before?
No, I don't think so. Sorry, yeah, thanks, Warden. So, I can, you know, when you're prepared for the written update, if you want the details from the time that I spent as well, I can provide that. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Moving forward, next item under that is members of council A-B-C-C. So, that is members of council who will be appointed to agency boards and commissions. So, for those of you who were at the swearing-in, there was a recess. We ended by going into recess, I'm not adjourning. The next day, we met as a group to try to come up with which councillors would sit on which committees, and then lots of jockeying and revisiting. And so, at the end of all of that, which was not long ago tonight, actually, we came up with a list of which councillors would sit on which committees. And so, I'm looking for a motion that Committee of the Whole recommends to council, that the appointments councillors to required agency boards and commissions and committees as detailed in the matrix provided by the clerk. So, can I call on someone for such a motion?
Sorry, you go ahead. Sorry about that. It flicked on you. Oh, I have the red button? Okay. So, we did discuss some changes. I, you know, it would, I think I would like to propose the change to the Housing Matters Coalition and add my name there to take that off of councillor Marshawn's place.
Yes, I believe the clerk said that following our earlier discussion, that it's that completed matrix. I don't know, do we need to go?
As amended.
As amended.
And we haven't amended it properly yet.
We haven't, but we haven't, oh, so we have it, you're saying that because it's on the package? Okay. So, would it help if we, if I actually just ran through them really quickly? Okay, let me get my notes. Sorry? Yes, I do. That's the old one, and I have a brand-new one. Okay. I will speed-read these. So, for, yes, so, that's a good point, that we make an effort to put some of these notes on the package for the public to see. So, if we're going to make changes, we should make that really transparent. So, the Inclusivity, Diversity, Equity and Accessibility Committee requires one member of councillor, that will be Amanda, councillor Amanda Mumberkett. The Alan J. McCackern Regional Airport Management Committee requires two plus an alternate, that will be councillor Amanda Mumberkett, councillor Shaun Sampson, and the alternate will be deputy Warden Brent Sampson. The Audit Committee requires all five, as does the Bylaw and Policy Committee. The Cape Breton Regional Enterprise Network Liaison Oversight Committee is the committee the warden sits on, Committee of the Whole, and is all five of us. The Eastern District Planning Commission will be Warden Lois Landry, councillor Shaun Sampson, with councillor Amanda Mumberkett as alternate. There is an Eastern County Regional Library Board, but there is only a citizens appointment, so that is in place. Fences Arbitration Committee will be, requires one councillor, that will be deputy Warden Sampson. Fire Protection Services Committee, one councillor, councillor Brian Marshawn. Landry Lake Water Utility Board is councillor Brian Marshawn, councillor Shaun Sampson, and as needed, an alternate would be deputy Warden Brent Sampson. Landry Lake Watershed Advisory Committee, it's a different group, requires one councillor, Brian Marshawn, and we have an alternate councillor, Shaun Sampson. Municipal Emergency Management Advisory Committee requires three councillors, that will be councillor Amanda Mumberkett, deputy Warden Brent Sampson, and Warden Lois Landry. Municipal Emergency Management Planning Committee, again, a different committee, that is two councillors, that will be councillor Amanda Mumberkett and Warden Lois Landry. Planning Advisory Heritage Committee, all members of council sit on that. Our CMP Advisory Board will be deputy Brent, deputy Warden Brent Sampson and councillor Shaun Sampson. Recreation Advisory Committee, Warden Lois Landry. Richmond Villa Board, councillor Brian Marshawn, councillor Amanda Mumberkett, deputy Warden Brent Sampson, and an alternate has been selected councillor Shaun Sampson. Richmond Port Hoxbury Joint Park Commission is Warden Lois Landry and councillor, sorry, there's two.
It should be three.
There should be three, right, yes. Sorry. Deputy, sorry, deputy Warden Brent Sampson, Warden Lois Landry, and councillor Amanda Mumberkett. The Bedore Lake Collective Collaborative Environmental Planning Initiative, senior councils, Warden Lois Landry. The Bedore Lake Sepey Steering Committee has a staff member appointed. Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health is councillor Brian Marshawn. The, and it, I guess all of us are alternate members as needed. Fire Services Protection is a staff person, Bidda, do I am I pronouncing that right? Is councillor Amanda Mumberkett. Straight Area Transit requires two councillors, that will be councillor Shaun Sampson and councillor Amanda Mumberkett. Straight Area Offshore Wind Task Force, Warden Lois Landry, councillor Brian Marshawn, and Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition is one councillor, councillor Amanda Mumberkett. There you have it. So, that is slightly different from the matrix that is posted online, and it was just to address some people that were on more committees than others, once we did all of that. So, a motion has been, no, did we, yeah, so I'm calling for a motion to accept the list of councillors on agency boards, commissions and committees, as I just read.
Moved by councillor Marshawn?
Moved by councillor Marshawn. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by deputy Warden Sampson. Any question, debate on the motion? All those in favor, say yes. Those opposed? Great. Yeah, so we don't need to get. So, the third item under the wardens issue is actually something I'm going to defer to deputy Warden Sampson. It's on the Low Income Tax Exemption Program Policy. So, I'll ask deputy Warden Sampson to speak to this.
So, the reason I want to have a quick discussion on this was, I believe, the previous councillor in District Three, as well as myself in District Five, had people reach out that weren't aware of it at the time, even though it was, you know, it was advertised once it was enacted. However, I believe the closing date for it was August 31st. And after checking with staff, there was not any major uptake on it. So, my proposal or my question to the rest of council tonight was whether or not we could extend the deadline, not permanently, or not every year, but maybe for this year, to allow some of the people that weren't aware of it to be able to qualify, if they so, you know, if they're able to qualify, to be able to apply, because some people had only realized about it in September and so on, when it would actually close at the end of August. So, I'd be open to discussion about, you know, whether or not people would feel comfortable with extending the deadline for, in this, this particular year, and then we could leave the deadline as is years going forward, once people are more aware of it, I think.
And I believe it falls under this agenda item, because we're not looking for a change in our policy, but rather an extension to the deadline this year because it's new. So, I'm open to conversation about that, or I'll entertain a motion if we'd like to.
Okay. Thanks, Warden. And I totally agree. Deputy Warden, I would be fully in favor of, for this year only, extending the deadline, having heard from, from both you and Melanie about, about, you know, people who are missing it. So, I would make a motion to extend the deadline. But before we settle on a date, I'm wondering, from a staff perspective, Troy, are there any implications for making sure that it can get applied to the tax bills this year? Is there, is there a last moment that we could?
I would have to ask my acting CFO on those deadlines, but.
So, the next tax bill's going out April 1st, so for us to get those write-offs, probably like March 15th, if that works, or the end of February, if you want. It's up to yourselves.
Deputy Warden Sampson?
Yeah, and I wasn't sure even of that, but like, something like end of February would be perfectly fine. Because I know, the thing is, the tax bill that was due as of November 1st, it's not going to help them on that one, but it could help them on the spring one, so, yeah, that's.
No, so, do you want to actually word your motion?
Sure. Thanks, Warden. So, I'll make a motion to extend the deadline on the Low Income Tax Exemption Program Policy to February 28th, 2025, for this year only.
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. So, we have moved by councillor Mumberkett, seconded by deputy Warden Sampson, to extend the deadline for the Low Income Tax Exemption Program for this calendar year only to, this year only for, to February 28th, 2025. Any question on the motion? All those in favors, say yes. Those opposed? The motion is carried. Over to item seven is CAO's items.
Madam Chair, the report is there for your review. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best. Some of the directors are here, but there are some that aren't.
Are there any questions on the CAO's report?
Yep, yep. Madam Warden, thank you. Yeah, just one that's, like, called to me was the funding opportunities for our sewer treatment plants, Chris, in Peterborough and Ayrshire. Just wondering if there's any updates on any of those funding opportunities or anything to report at this time? Okay. Yeah.
Can't hurt to ask.
Never far from mine, Madam Warden.
There you go. Any other questions on CAO's report? Comments, concerns, queries? Hearing none, we'll move on to the community acknowledgements. So, as always, we will begin with the Volunteer of the Month recognition. Because Committee of the Whole didn't meet in October, there are two, two folks to recognize this, this month. One is particularly bittersweet, so the individual that we are recognizing, that we recognized back in September of 2024 was Harold Landry, who sadly passed away October 20th, actually, just the day after the municipal election. And I would encourage you, if you get a second, to look up his obituary, because it did make reference to this recognition in particular, so. So, I will just, for those folks who don't know, I'll just speak a little bit about Harold Landry, and then I'll turn it over to councillor from District Four. As marine engineer, Harold not only worked on countless boats in River Bourgeois and the surrounding areas, but also played a pivotal role in shaping the community. His technical expertise and deep connection to the water made him a trusted figure in the local community. Harold was one of the founding members of the River Bourgeois Mariners Society, where he served for many years as vice-chair and contributed his expertise and dedication to the society's mission. When the future of the community marina was uncertain, Harold united the residents and spearheaded the formation of the society, which led to the preservation and development of the cherished marina we all enjoy today. In addition to his work on the Mariners Society, Harold was also an active member of the River Bourgeois Community Services Society, where he has served, where he served as property services chairperson. His commitment and passion have made a lasting impact on the community. Please join us in recognizing Harold for his hard work, his commitment to community, and we send our condolences to his family. So, councillor Sampson, is there anything you'd like to add? Oh, councillor Mumberkett? Sorry. We're getting there.
By many names. It's all right. Yeah, no, I just wanted to extend a personal, my personal condolences to Harold's family. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend a banquet that the River Bourgeois Mariners held for Harold before we, before he received the Volunteer of the Month Award and presented him with a photo of the marina in River Bourgeois at the last boat run that they had, with an inscription on it noting that we thanked him for his contribution. And I think he was really tickled pink to see that, and certainly his wife, Georgie, was as well, and I know she's going to miss him greatly, as will his, as well as kids. So, just, I guess, would conclude by saying, you know, a thank you to Harold and a thank you to staff for recognizing his contributions as well and, you know, putting him forward as Volunteer of the Month. But also, you know, an encouragement for people who are not currently connected to a volunteer organization, to recognize our volunteer bases, getting older, there's lots we can learn from them, and people like Harold set a great example. So, take an opportunity to reach out and help out in your community if you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, October's Volunteer of the Month is very much with us, and although she's probably down at the hall tonight and won't be hearing us live. Evelyn is the, Evelyn Landry is the October 2024 Volunteer of the Month. Evelyn is the go-to person for all things in the St. Louis Hall Kitchen. Most weeks, you can find her cooking, cleaning, organizing, or even painting. She oversees food orders for local fundraisers, manages volunteer work schedules and coordinates volunteer roles. In addition to organizing funeral luncheons and serving as a liaison for parish arrangements, Evelyn chairs the Loosdale CWL's Faith Committee and volunteers regularly at the Loosdale Lions Monthly Breakfast. Beyond her CWL and breakfast duties, Evelyn delivers meals and treats to community members in need, spreading kindness throughout the community. Please join us in recognizing Evelyn for her hard work, dedication and commitment to her community. We thank you for all you do for Richmond County. And I'll turn it over to councillor Marshawn to add any words.
Thank you, Warden. I guess it's pretty much all stated there, and on behalf of the community, District Three, we'd like to thank Evelyn for everything she does and just wish that she continues to stay active in the community, because she's pretty much active in every organization in the community. Thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you. And Evelyn is one of those people who also supports other communities. She's at every breakfast, and she and her husband, so it's great to see that recognized. So, in, are there, I do want to just say, before I ask if there are any other folks who have any other acknowledgements they'd like to make, I would personally like to make note of just how many Remembrance Day activities happened yesterday, and, and most of them involved people, particularly some getting up in years, standing out in the rain for a very long time. And councillor Sampson and I were lucky enough to attend the event in Ayrshire, and striking how many people were there and stood for so long in the rain and recognizing the contributions of our veterans. So, thank you to all of the folks who make all of those events happen. We're a community in Isle of Dam that tends to kind of circling center around the Legion, but I was, I was also lucky enough to attend the banquet for the St. Peters Legion, and my gosh, those folks move around and they, they are everywhere and make, it's a very large day, and what it must take to make all of that happen at exactly the right times is really, really mind-boggling. So, a very heartfelt thank you to everybody who was able to celebrate yesterday and who pulled off all those events. So, I'll open it up, if anyone else has any other community acknowledgements they'd like to make. Councillor Sampson?
Yeah, so, just like to add to that, Madam Warden, you know, we had the privilege, you and I, to be in Ayrshire yesterday, and, you know, same goes for all the legions in our county, but the work that these guys are doing in Ayrshire with the Banner Project and fish fries and breakfasts and music circles and the Poppy Fund, just great work to support veterans and their spouses, so, just great to see, and just want to applaud and acknowledge all those volunteers, yeah, great stuff.
Councillor Mumberkett?
Thank you, Warden. Yeah, just would echo those comments and just point out that it is five cenotaphs that the St. Peters branch visits, and so that makes, you know, it's two in District Four and then three in your district, Brian, it's, it is quite an undertaking, so, and it was not.
and then three in your district, Brian. It's, it is quite an undertaking, so, and it was not a nice day. So thank you to all the folks who support that. But I did also want to make a couple other mentions, if that's okay. Wanted to do a public acknowledgement of the great success of the Cape Breton Partnership's Investor Summit, which happened, it feels like it was a million years ago, but it was only a couple of weeks ago. It's a networking event that they hold annually. This year was held in Bedeck and brings together municipalities, first nations, communities, and private sector from all across Cape Breton Island. So it's really a unique opportunity to get to connect and know people. So congrats to the team on, on their efforts there. And Rochelle is here in the gallery this evening, so I'll ask you to convey that along. And I also wanted to say congratulations to Everyone Fuels on their federal investment of $22.5 million through Transport Canada there to fund enhancements to their marine, their marine terminal infrastructure, installation of green ammonia loading arm and development of green ammonia supply lines, supply pipelines. So that was a big investment in our, in our backyard, and a big congratulations to that company for attracting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, since we're, since we're focused on Rochelle here in the gallery, I just want to acknowledge Rochelle for all her work with Areshat Community Development Association, and also thank and acknowledge and applaud all the volunteers that helped put that playground together that you now see up this hill. It's very exciting, Rochelle. So thank you to you and your staff and your group and all the volunteers that put that playground together. It's, it's, it does my, my heart good to see that playground. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else? No? Great. Okay, so we'll move on to correspondence. There are a couple of items under correspondence that require action on our part, so we'll, we'll take a look at those. The first is Kathleen Jeffrey, interim Director of Finance, has some information for us about Royal Canadian Legion Branch 150 grant request for Type 1 infrastructure grant funds in the amount of $5,000. So CAO, do you want to talk us through these?
Not normally, but I can. The, the grant is there. It is for comfort center improvements down at, at the Legion. They've been working with our EMO to figure out what it is they need and others. Their detailed quote is there, the contributions from the other sources, and the letter from the CFO with the compliance with the grant application.
Yeah, okay. Is there any discussion on this motion or any, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, so for me, Madam Warden, I had the privilege to take that tour and then they showed us, you know, what, what they're doing and the steps they're taking to, to make sure that, that, that Legion does become a, an emergency center, comfort center, to the point where I think you can concur, Madam Warden, that in, in the event of a hurricane or a flood or anything like that, the Red Cross would come in there, take over that Legion, and, and it would be there for people to have shelter, take showers. So, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's great and hopefully, yeah, a project that we can support.
So I'm looking for a motion or...
Just, oh, in the letter from the CFO or interim, it's just saying the income statement or the balance sheet is not there. Is, did it, was it received? Because it would appear it's not complete.
At this time, it was requested and it has not been received to date. And that's why the CFO mentioned that in her report. And they're in the practice that they had not, had to in the past. And not saying that they won't supply it, it's just at the time and coming here, we don't have it at this time. So if you guys are willing to proceed without it, or you can wait for it, that's a decision of council.
Counselor Mumberkett?
Okay, thank you, Warden. I had the same question as you, Counselor Marshawn. So, you know, so I feel like the application isn't really complete, which makes me think maybe I'd like to see it come back once we have the, all the information. But I, and thank you, CAO, for confirming that it does align with the work that Steve is doing on emergency planning. That was one of the questions I had. It doesn't note that it aligns with our strategic plan. There's no box checked there. So, but it, it does if it's work that's hap- So, so I would ask that in the future, maybe if we could have that alignment with the strat plan. The other question I have is just generally, procedurally, you know, we have, what, 20-some comfort stations in the county? And I know we just did a big project on, you know, upgrading equipment there. I'm feeling like these financial asks should come as a package of, these are the comfort stations gaps, and this is what we need money for. And some of these comfort stations will be designated as emergency shelters, and this is what we need the money for to support that, so that we could kind of make sure that we're funding these projects in a way that it's kind of more strategic in nature, like, you know? Or, like, I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure why this is coming as a one-of to council and not like part of our emergency management planning. I guess that's my only question. Although I, I will say, like, I think it's critically important that we have more of this in the county and would like to congratulate the Legion on, you know, bringing it forward. But I just feel like it's not part of a strategy, strategy. How do we fund one and not others? And when does that, where, how do we fill those gaps, I guess?
Yeah, so I think where that gap lies, Counselor Mumberkett, is that it's a, an emergency center, and there's steps that have to be taken over and beyond what a comfort center would be. So when you talk about the projects we funded and the provinces funded, we're talking about Generax to make sure that people have heat and people can have shelter. But when it comes to this emergency center, I think you're talking about showers and cots and all that stuff, right? So it's a different ask altogether, right? Different approach.
Yeah, I was thinking, I noticed that as well, but the maybe the option would be if council was in favor of going forward with it, that, you know, we instruct staff to go forward after having received that information. You know what I mean?
So you're proposing that we would move forward with a motion that includes mention of the fact that this can only happen following the receipt of the balance sheet? So I would look for a motion?
Yeah, so, yeah, if we're looking at, yeah, I appreciate that, Deputy Warden, and that's the approach I would take as well, so we're not tying this project up. For me, I guess when we're talking about funding this and how we would fund this, I would gladly fund $1,000 out of my district fund in the hopes that we can find the funding with our district funds or the regional fund to make up that $5,000. Thank you.
Sorry, I cut you off.
Now I gotta hit it? Okay. How many emergency centers are designated in the county?
We have a list of 14 at this time. Oh, sorry, emergency, oh, sorry, comforts, sorry. And emergency shelter. I'd have to get the list, and I have one on my desk, but I don't have it here. Sorry. We have a list of about 20 roughly of shelters within, but the ones that are emergency are certified for emergencies. I can't tell you offhand right now.
So is the new Horizon Center an emergency or just a comfort? Comfort, okay. So the only one on the island is this one?
The emergency, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And, and I also would be willing to designate $1,000 from the District Two funds to, to go towards, to go towards this shelter. I should say, we also did speak to them at our meeting with them and our tour about the fact that although it is an emergency shelter run by the Red Cross, that they would take over in the event of an emergency. It, they are open to conversations about being a designated place that they would run when just the power goes out for a really long time for newcomers who don't have a place to shower. So even though it's not a designated emergency that the Red Cross would deem an emergency, they were very open to conversations about, about that.
Yeah, that's, that's true, Madam Warden, and that, yeah, that's very encouraging, that discussion. So, yeah, they would open it up. So, yeah, it would, you know, emergency would be the Red Cross taking it over, but they're open to having staff there and volunteers there to say it's not an emergency, but we're going to open it up for showers and, and heat and all that stuff, right? So, yeah, thank you for, thank you for bringing that up, Madam Warden. So, I guess, for me, I would put a motion forward, I guess, that would see us allocate $1,000 from District One, $1,000 from District Two, and the remaining $3,000 from our regional fund to fund this project. Thank you.
That's the motion on the floor to allocate $1,000 from each of District One and Two and $3,000 from the regional fund to go toward this project, should they be able to provide the balance sheet. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Counselor Sampson, seconded by Deputy Warden Sampson. So $1,000 from each District One. Sorry, question on the motion? Or is there a question you have? Sorry.
Okay. Are you saying regional fund? Because they're asking for Type 1. So you're saying Type 4? You said regional.
Yeah, we're switching.
Yeah.
They've asked for one thing, we're switching.
You're switching it, okay.
So the, do you have a point clarification? Sure.
Thank you. So, like, I would, I would be willing to support this motion as well, because I really think it's important, and it's something that's been on my mind, is the trans- you know, we need certain locations to move from comfort centers to emergency shelters. So kudos to this group for stepping up. But I am concerned, again, that we're not seeing, okay, these are the two or three or four or however many emergency shelters in Richmond County, and this is the gap they have in facilities to be that, and this is the money that is required. Like, we need to be strategic around this kind of thing, because I don't think we'd be able to necessarily fund all of them all at once. So, I mean, I'm still willing to support this, because I think it's important, and I have no idea how whether, how many other emergency shelters we have. But, but I guess what I would like to, to, to ask is if we could have, like, I know the comfort station list comes out. Where are the emergency shelters and what do they need?
So would we be looking at a separate motion to take, to ask staff to take that on as a task to sort of analyze the spots where we have comfort centers, where we have emergency shelters and gaps for better planning moving forward? Counselor?
It's being done. It just needs to be shared, and it should have been part of this package, that's all.
So then we may not need a motion to staff if it's already in progress? Fair enough. Okay, Counselor Marshawn?
How much money are left in these funds? Do we have any information on that?
We do, and it's going to be circulated to you guys once we have it. There's enough to do everything here tonight, and then there's a list coming out to all of you with what's in your district funds, what's in the regional funds, and what has been allocated since April 1st out of your own district, so that you know where the money in your district has gone prior to you being elected.
As well as where the money has gone in the remainder of the funds? What's been spent already and where?
Exactly.
We will have that, okay. Thank you.
Yes, that, that is actually sort of why I was hesitant at first. I'm not really in a position to say much about what funds are left. So hearing reassurances that we have the, we have the funds in each of these budgets, there is a motion on the floor, and that is to provide $1,000 from District One, $1,000 from District Two, and $3,000 from the regional fund to be provided to the Royal Canadian Legion for the infrastructure grant application on the condition that they submit their balance sheet. So any question on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say yes? Those opposed? Motion is carried. So there's another request for grant request. This one is in form of start two, or type two, sorry, startup activity fund in the amount of $500 for the Acadia Ville tree lighting ceremony. And I believe, scrolling down, I believe we have all of the documentation for this one?
You do, ma'am.
Yeah.
It's $1,000, and they're putting in five and asking you for five.
Yeah, I thought it was actually more than five. I thought they were contributing more than... Anyway, yeah, they're asking for five. This is a District Two event. Sorry, I've lost my place here. This is a District Two event. I'm, I'm happy to, is it the practice that we would have the District Two counselor provide supports from their regional fund?
It does happen.
I, I, I am happy to, to do that.
So you want to change it from what they're asking for, what group, to a district fund? Because they're asking for a startup. But I got the impression you want to take it from your funds?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Under the category, under the heading of a startup. Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Mumberkett.
On your behalf, maybe, I'll make a motion to, to support the project to the tune of $500 as requested from the District Two funds.
Thank you very much for that. Seconded by Counselor Marshawn to have $500 from District Two funds go to the Acadia Ville Community Center for their startup grant application. Any question? No? All those in favor, say yes? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We have two others that do not require fund, they're not requests for funding. They are two requests for letters of support. So the first is from the ATV, oh, sorry, the Isle Royale ATV Club, which is a request for a letter of support. Counselor Mumberkett, do you want to speak to this? I know that you had, this correspondence went from your group to you.
Okay, so this request aligns well, I think, with our trail strategy. It is a proposal, a proposal was submitted from the Isle Royale ATV Club to the provincial government regarding protected lands in the Cape Line Cove area. And the proposal was submitted, I think, several times. Once in, back in 2015, once in 2019, and now again this year. The Isle Royale Club is proposing, is requesting that a section of the Cape Line Cove Road in Framboise be lifted from the wilderness area for off-highway vehicles. What this will enable the club to do is to connect to this entire end of Cape Breton Island with their trail system. So my, you know, from my discussions with, with Judy and, and other folks at the club, it sounds like they'd be looking for a letter of authority to be able to kind of move, or maybe it's not called a letter of authority anymore, the share the road, share the road from the provincial government type of thing, so that the ATVs could access this piece. And they're looking for a letter of support from us as, as part of that application. so that the ATVs could access this piece, and they're looking for a letter of support from us as, as part of that application, so. Yeah, that's all the information I have. Thank you.
So looking for some discussion or a motion on this matter?
Yeah, and I just echo that, that I think it aligns well with the trail strategy as well as further down in this. It has been supported by the, the local ATV club within District Five because this group is actually from the CBRM, but they're looking to connect trails down through Richmond County. So I'd be in support of this initiative.
No.
Okay. So we, we seem to have some support around the table, but I'm looking for a motion to write that.
Moved by Counselor Mershon to write the letter of support as requested.
Just want to be clear that there's no monetary support. We discussed that already. Just be clear in the letter so they don't expect that at any time.
I'll second that motion.
So there is a motion on the floor to write a letter of support to the Isle Royale ATV Club as outlined in their request, um, with the stipulation that there is no monetary support. So moved by Counselor Mershon, seconded by Deputy Warden Sampson. Hearing no more debate. Um, all those in favor of the motion, say yes? Those opposed? Motion is carried. So the last one for action is the Dorothy Bernard letter from the Dr. Kingston Memorial Community Health Center. She is also looking for a letter of support. Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. So Dorothy's actually looking for two letters of support. I think we'd have to go to two different places for grant proposals that she has already submitted. Their deadlines were such that, you know, with, with the election cycle and then the swearing and ceremony, she was not able to get these in front of council before the deadlines for the, for the funds. So she's asking us to submit them directly. Um, the first one is a Community Foundation of Nova Scotia Visions Fund, and the second one is, um, is the Age Friendly Grant Program, thank you. So I'd be prepared to make a motion to, for the warden to write letters of support for both of these projects because they sound like they would, you know, they would not cost us anything and, and provide some good results in our community, I think. So that would be my motion, is to provide letters of support for both.
Moved by Counselor Mumberkett, seconded by Counselor Mershon to write both letters of support as outlined in the request from Dorothy Bernard. Hearing no more discussion on that. All those in favor of the motion, say yes? Those opposed? Motion is carried. So there are some items for information only. Scroll down. Oh, my gosh. Hang on. I'll get there.
It's a big package.
Oh, my gosh. One oh seven, oh, my gosh. Okay. No wonder I was taken forever. There we go.
Implications, step up a lot of paper.
Yeah. Okay, so the first one is the Richmond County Municipal Council Letter of Support for Containerized H2 Demonstration Project. So this was for your information provided by Warden Amanda Mumberkett dated October fifteenth. So that letter is in your package. The next one is the acknowledgement, um, statement of acknowledgement for CCA Week. So that was Continuing Care Assistant Week was October seventh to eleventh. Again, a letter there for you to take a look at. For immediate release, there was a Eastern Counties Regional Library media release. So that was something that was received by us at the end of October regarding their community engagement and strategic planning session. You'll make note that there is a session being held on Friday, November fifteenth from eleven AM until one PM at the Pettit de Graal Library. But there's also Zoom sessions, if anybody is interested, Thursday, November twenty-first, from six to eight. And there are some, a couple of other libraries a little further out. The Cape Breton Partnership is putting on offshore wind community information sessions. And those are being held from November twelfth through to December fourth. And so there's, three of those are actually new dates, which I'm very glad to hear because several of the ones that are local are during the, um, yeah, the NSFM. So when I tried to put them in my calendar, it said no go. So for those folks who are around, there's one at the St. Peter's Lions Club on November twenty-seventh, and that's from six to eight in the evening, and November twenty-eighth from six to eight at the Isle Madame New Horizons Seniors Club. So if you get a chance, those are really interesting sessions to be a part of. There is also, at our meeting on October thirty-first, we made a motion to advertise for community vacancies or vacancies that are on our agency boards, commissions, and committees. So that advertisement is there. And finally, the, no, sorry, Nova Scotia Public Works Highway Program. There is a, aye, 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 did I go back? No. Keep going, keep going. Um, yeah, so our CAO received something from the Chief Engineer of Highways Program Division around the Gaelic boundary signs in Richmond County. So just thanking us for taking the time to express our concerns. And the nomination committee for the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, there is a nominations closed, hmm, November first? Do I have that date right? Yeah. So nominations for officers closed. And very happy to report that our councillor for District Four, councillor Amanda Mumberkett, will, was acclaimed as the Cape Breton Strait Electoral Region Representative. Perhaps, Counselor Mumberkett, you could speak to the vacancies? I know that came up at our meeting, that they're actually going to have to call special elections for those vacancies. So is there, I believe there's a second Cape Breton Strait Electoral Region position that is, is unfilled. But they, they did not, um, they are not sort of reopening the nomination package process but are actually having vacancies, elections for that. So are there any questions or comments, concerns about anything under the correspondence that we just covered? Go ahead, Counselor.
So for the Ideas Committee, I just wanted to emphasize that we are still wanting to attract more folks who have lived experience with disabilities in our community to participate on that committee. So certainly if you're, you know, if, if folks are interested in that one in particular, there are some supports that we have in place now through policy that we developed over the last four years to provide some remuneration for, for the work of committee members as well. So I just wanted to flag that one in particular because it's important work. And, um, you know, it focuses now on diversity, equity, and inclusion as well as accessibility. So if there are folks out there with, with lived experience who could share their ideas with us, pardon the pun, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, and, and just for clarification, that committee used to be called the Accessibility Committee. So it has been renamed to be more inclusive. Uh, the Idea Committee is inclusive, diversity, equity, and accessibility. So very important work that goes on there, and first voice, um, comments are always really, really helpful. So, um, any other questions? No one knows? Okay. So in your package or online, there are review of checks issued for the month of September. In your package, that's on page one hundred and eighteen. And, um, they go through several pages for the month of September. And then because there was no meeting in October, there's two months' worth of checks there. So if anybody has any questions about those? I'm scrolling, scrolling. Okay, and, um, item number eleven, sorry, did you have something? No. Okay, sorry. Item number eleven is a review of action items. So this is the list that is provided by the CAO and the clerk at these meetings. There is, anytime somebody says we should or there's a motion table, then it goes into this action list. And then we can sort of really get a good sense of how things are going. I don't know if there's anything you want to comment on or if we have any questions from councillors? Okay, lots going on. So, um, certainly if there's any questions, we can flag those directly. But, um, moving on to the items added to the agenda. So what, what I have here in my notes, Counselor Mershon, is you wanted to discuss contact information.
Yeah, um, I guess in reference to our contact information that's posted online, I'm not for, especially with no technology allowance, having my personal cellphone. So is there a way that we can have separate numbers? And in the, I guess, in the issue of even continuance after, if we decide to end our term, if they, if there was a specific number or an email address, address like District Three, it would continue for the new councillor instead of having something specific as their numbers. I remember some years ago, um, the warden had a specific number. And when I was warden, I had the landline transferred to my cellphone. So do we get a group of landlines and they get transferred to whatever device we want to use? And then that number stays with that district? So come in 2028, whoever is for representing a certain district, the number would stay. So if someone was speaking to you in July, August, September, and switch happens in October, they still have the same contact number. So I'm wondering if we can maybe, if there's a thought to change that or even for the district have, uh, just District Three councillor at Richmond County instead of a specific name? Or the new incoming councillor for those districts would be able to see those emails? Is there an appetite for that, or?
So I, I, here's Counselor Mumberkett, you have some thoughts on that?
So just wanted to offer a comment on the email address situation. So, um, even though they have our first and last names, because we're the elected person in that specific district, should there be a change partway through a term or in the next term or whatever, those emails can be forwarded, right? So there wouldn't be an interruption necessarily in email, but, but good point on the cellphone numbers. I, I would kind of be more concerned with, with that than, than the email. But just technologically, I don't know, I don't know if there's a, an alternate solution that, you know, that would exist, but maybe that's a question for staff.
Counselor Mershon? I'm sorry.
No, I mean, we could just get five separate landlines. There's already one for the warden. So you'd need four separate numbers, and people will contact those numbers, and they would be just forwarded to our phones. And then that number would stay. So come 2028, staff here would just forward, put the new personal cellphone number of whoever is using or is representing a certain district. Those, those, uh, numbers would get forwarded to your, whatever, whatever method of contact you want to use.
Would that be something that could be optional? So could a councillor who was comfortable using just one device, what you're suggesting wouldn't prohibit that, right?
You'd use the device you want. That would be the number for the representative for a district, and it would remain that way. And that would be forwarded to your device.
Yeah, I, 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 I was just going to suggest that that is something that, in order for us to make a fulsome decision on that, maybe to refer to staff to get the IT specifics. And just so we would know what the costs would be for additional two-two-six numbers, for example. I know we ran into this in school. It's no longer two-two-six from five-eight-seven is not long distance anymore, right? It used to be years ago, but I don't think it is. Right? Yeah, I know, but it, it used to be long distance to call two-two-six to five-eight-seven, but it's not anymore, right? I don't. Yeah, it, it, we ran into that one years ago, but I'm pretty sure, at the school, we ran into that. But I'm pretty sure that that's no longer the case. So I'd, I'd entertain a motion to refer this matter to staff. Moved by Counselor Mershon. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Mumberkett to have staff investigate the use of email addresses, generic email addresses and landlines to be forwarded to a device of choice. All those in favor? Aye. All those contrary-minded? Those opposed? None? Nobody said none? Fine. And we now have our fifteen-minute question period. So reminder, this question period is not limited to items on the agenda. So, um, there is a phone number to call, nine oh two, two-two-six, nine-eight-eight-five. And I believe there's a slight delay, is that right? So, yeah, so.
So we've been told.
So we've been told. So I, I, I don't know if anybody in the gallery has questions. I, I have a small gallery tonight, but, um, I, I, I believe we'll wait a few minutes because there is a delay in hearing the phone ring.
Gets held up at Lennox Passage.
Well, with their building there, it'll fix all that. Two-two-six, nine-eight-eight-five. I don't know how long you typically.
It would be ringing by now.
It would be ringing by now?
It is.
Yeah, we're comfortable moving on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I, I see that there is no further business on the agenda. So hearing no complaints about that. The committee of the whole meeting is is that the phone?
That is the phone.
Oh, my gosh.
Hello? Okay, go ahead. State your name and then your question.
Robbie Fugere, District One.
Okay.
I'm wondering about the low-income tax benefit. What is the, what is the ceiling, the income ceiling?
So I, I assume everybody heard, but the question that was asked was what the low-income tax exemption, what the ceiling is for that. So I'll, I'll ask, I, I know it's embedded in the policy. So Robbie, I believe it's twenty-five thousand dollars. And can I just clarify, that's household income, it's very much like the others. So all members living in the house provide their notice of assessment, and the total amount is twenty-five thousand. Are you still there? Did I?
Did we lose him?
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much for that.
Do we have call waiting? Like, would we know if somebody called while we were?
I don't know. This is new for me, too. We're only getting, we only had a few of these.
Yeah.
We don't get to do it that often.
That is quite a, a, a long delay, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially from District One. They didn't have far to go.
Yeah, they didn't have to cross the Lennox Passage bridge. Okay, so I'm going to try that again. Seeing there are no, there is no further business on the agenda, the committee of the whole meeting is adjourned.
Well done, Warden.
Thank you.
That's a lot of paper.